Welcome to the March 24th, excuse me, March 14th, 2023 Oshkosh City Council Meeting. The City Clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Hansen.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Wojciechowski.
Here.
Erickson excused. Paul Mary excused.
Next we'll be having the invocation led by Councilmember Ford.
As we gather tonight, we're grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. We're joined by students from Carl Trager Elementary and Carl Trager Middle School. We've got Raluka Muran. We have Jocelyn Lawson. And we have Morgan Spa with us this evening. Ladies, if you wouldn't mind coming on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nicely done. Thank you. We'll say up here for a second.
I did.
To show our appreciation.
You see on that side?
Who knows? Just keep going.
Can I have a few photos?
Yeah.
You guys want to go right out here?
You gotta get in there, man.
The G, you wanna get in here with them? You've had all these.
I have had all these too.
Nobody really wants you in there, man.
Too bad, too bad. Thank you very much, ladies.
I shout out.
Next up, we have introduction of staff. Finance Director Van Gamble, if you'd like to take it away.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This evening, I have two introductions I'd like to make. I'm very pleased to announce we have a couple of additions to our finance department. First of all, I'd like to introduce Denise Edwards. Denise is coming to Oshkosh from actually Nevada, Las Vegas area. And she has a master's in business administration. She's gonna be helping me as a management analyst. Will be working with city council on agenda items. And more importantly, will be helping us in our capital improvement planning process, the CIP process, and our operating budget. So I'd like to welcome Denise Edwards to the staff.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I enjoy working with Russ and the team, and I look forward to what we get to do together.
Welcome.
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 And also at this time, while she's been with our department for about a year, I don't think you've had a chance to meet her yet. But our new accountant is Tracy Youngworth. Tracy comes to us with a CPA in the Philippines and is helping us out in our accounting activities. She's gonna help out Denise on some of the budgeting issues and some of the city council issues as we move forward. But I'd like to introduce and introduce you Tracy Youngworth. So Tracy.
Hi, everyone. I'm very, very grateful for the opportunity to be working for the city. And I'm grateful for the supportive leaders that we have. And just, you know, grateful for that I'm part of a wonderful team. And I look forward to working with you all.
Welcome.
So that's two of our most recent additions. And actually, come April and May, we may have some other changes within our organization as well that I'll introduce you to. But those are the ones I wanted to introduce to you tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you for serving, Van Gamble.
Thanks, Russ.
Next up, we have a presentation this evening. A presentation by Professor Del Toro from Lawrence University on... Are we doing that then?
Yeah.
Oh, prior to the presentation, I apologize. My bad. So prior to the presentation, if you'll give us just one moment, Professor. So we have, I understand we have a request from one of my fellow colleagues, one council member, to change the order of the agenda tonight and to lay over items 23-130 and 23-131 that's pertaining to a development located at West 3400 block of Lake Buttermore Drive at this time. Is there a motion to take up those items 23-130 and 23-131 at this time?
I make that motion?
Any discussion on the motion to amend the layout of the agenda and move those up?
Yep, Councilmember Ford. I think that's why everybody's here, so I'll do that right away. And I'll have a follow-up to this in a second.
Sounds good to me. If there's no further comment, I'm adjusting the agenda. We'll take the role on the motion.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hansen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Karies.
All right. Is there a motion to lay over items 23-130 and 23-131?
Yep, I make that motion. I should say I move to not take public discussion at this time and lay over items 23-130 and 23-131 to the March 28th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to not take public discussion and lay over to the March 28th meeting? Councilmember Ford, followed by Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, this is no surprise to anyone who contacted us today, and thank you all for that. So I'm hoping we can defer these two items dealing with the proposed new development on Lake Buttermore Drive until the following council meeting, two weeks from now. So I was about to make a motion along these lines at Plan Commission. If you were there, it was a little heated, got a little distracted. You know why. But I still think it's the right thing to do, and I think we should do it. Here's my reasoning. City of Oshkosh did not hold a meeting with the neighbors in the town of Oshkosh who are most concerned about this development. As Director Lyons very graciously stated at Plan Commission, we should have done that. I think we underestimated the level of concern. We did that not because staff doesn't care, because we don't care. It's because we're all human. That land's been zoned multifamily use for a long time. And I guess we didn't consider the reaction. The fact that we didn't, I think, have that meeting contributed to a Plan Commission meeting that was really not productive. In a true neighborhood meeting, you have back and forth, the ability to ask questions, get them answered in real time. I know I spoke with a few people today asking, you know, why was it so formal at Plan Commission? Well, that's just how Plan Commission is. It's not set up to be a back and forth, and yes, that's how council is as well. But that's also not conducive to engagement and actually problem solving. So I'm hoping with two more weeks, we can have a little more time here. Time for a neighborhood meeting to take place, something where folks can meet with city staff and get their questions answered and express their concerns in a back and forth productive manner. Time for the town of Oshkosh to hold whatever meetings they want to have on their end. Time for the developer to help alleviate any concerns from residents the best they can, give you an opportunity to speak. And then hopefully, an opportunity for some fact-based discussion on things like environmental impacts, traffic, scope of the project, plans for phasing it in. Because we were a little bit all over the place in Plan Commission. I think that was a result of the fact that we didn't have a neighborhood meeting. I'll say I don't know where this project ends up, but I do think that we all need to be good neighbors and listen to and address as many concerns about this project as we possibly can. I know we won't end up in a perfect place, because we never end up in a perfect place. That's the nature of this business. But I think we can get to a better place, and we have done that in the past. And I'm confident we can do that here. And I want to ensure everyone that came tonight, that if and when this project comes up, whether it's tonight, this motion goes down, whether it's in two weeks, you will have an opportunity to speak. I don't want that motion, the part of the motion saying no public comment to be interpreted as us shutting down public comment, that's not the point. The point here is to delay this tonight so we can solve some of these problems prior to the meeting where we do have the opportunity for public comment. So I appreciate my colleagues for considering this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Miller.
Mike, thank you. I echo your sentiments. Just talking with staff a little bit today, I'm not sure two weeks is gonna be enough. Typically, Kelly, chime in here. But typically, in these types of town hall meetings and things like that, the developer is also at the meeting along with city staff, correct? Kind of pitching the project and things like that. Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct. Typically, the developer is at the meeting in addition to city staff. And we usually like to give at least two weeks' notice to the residents that we are sending the notices to. And just with the time of year being spring break and everything, it might be a little difficult to accomplish all of that in the next two weeks.
So what, are you okay?
Yeah, do you want to offer friendly amendments to my motion?
Yeah, so I...
We don't allow friendly amendments. You can withdraw.
Yep.
Withdraw and re...
Okay. So I can withdraw?
Yes.
My motion? And then I can make another motion?
Correct.
To delay it for a month, for two meetings? What's the proper language?
Yep.
For two meetings? Okay, which accomplishes the same, the same thing.
Yep.
That would move to the 11th.
April 11th.
April 11th.
Yes, if she did the second, Courtney needs to agree that...
Agreed. Second, second, that second.
Thank you.
Okay, you're okay with withdrawing?
So the motion has been withdrawn by both the motioner and the second. Mr. Ford, the floor is yours for another motion.
Yeah, I make that motion to delay it until April 11th.
Second. Jesse can't write faster.
Who says government is slow, folks? Look how fast we did that.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion to lay over with no public comment taken this evening till April the 11th? Seeing none, when the clerk is ready, she can take the role. You're good.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hansen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Karies.
So these items are removed from the agenda. Thank you to anyone who may have come this evening looking to speak on these matters. They'll be placed on the April 11th agenda for council, for council discussion and action that evening. You'll be given the chance to speak that night, absolutely. You may appear at that time, or you may also provide written comments to the city manager, his office prior to that date, which will be shared with council. As always, you can also reach, continue to reach us via phone, via email, as, you know, as many residents have, and we appreciate those comments. Thank you. Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Um, just for the sake, this might be a clarity question for those who might have showed up expecting to speak tonight and might not be able to show up at the later date for whatever reason. Now that it's off the agenda, are they, would someone technically be able to use the citizen statements to talk about it?
That was part of the motion is not to take public comment.
Not at all? Okay.
Because it was on the agenda.
All right. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
With that, next up is a presentation, Nomo May. Professor Del Toro from Lawrence University. And actually, if we'd like to maybe just give a moment for Professor to allow the room to clear a little bit.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, there were some residents that had some hands raised. We have staff in the back. If you've got any questions, feel free to contact them, and they'll, you know, try to help you as best we can.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Yeah, we can't do that. There's staff in the back that can answer your questions for everybody that had their hands up.
Kelly can help you. If the gentleman's got a question.
Yep, you bet.
The professor shows up and the room empties.
I guess they were pretty tough with that. Fifteen minutes of professors not talking, they, everybody walks.
You get the same feeling when you're in the classroom?
I do, actually, yeah. Everybody, you know, as I start to speak, everybody kind of zones out, and that's about right, so.
Professor, if you'd like, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to come to speak to you at council chambers, as previously stated. I am an associate professor of biology and data science at Lawrence University. I'm also an alderman for the city of Appleton, District 4. And so I come at this problem of Nomo May from different perspectives. And I'm here to basically just offer a report of what's happened between 2020 and 2022 as we look into the 2023 season of Nomo May. If you should have any questions, I'm happy to address them here. Just stop me along the way. I'm happy to pause. I don't really have a formal presentation in store for you all. I'll just kind of walk you through some key take-home points. But if you think of something else afterwards, my contact information is right on that little pamphlet. You can just reach me at my alderman email, district4@appleton.org. So why Nomo May? Nomo May actually originates back to, I first encountered Nomo May when I was living in Wales in the UK, where an organization called Plant Life started this movement to try and provide early-season forage for pollinators that are emerging out of hibernation. So basically, give our pollinators something to eat as they've spent a long, hard winter underground for the most part. In the state of Wisconsin, we have 400 different species of bees in the city of Appleton. To compare it, that diversity, we have recorded over 100 different species of bees. So I would expect that species diversity in the city of Oshkosh is roughly the same. So why protect our pollinators? Well, pollinators are faced with a variety of threats, including things like climate change, overuse and misuse of chemicals, disease, mites. All of these things kind of come together to really affect our pollinator communities. And pollinators are extremely important, because one in three pieces of food that we eat actually are dependent on insect-mediated pollination. If we think to our local economies, or at least our Wisconsin state economy, basically, all of the fruit that we produce, either Door County cherries, apples, plums, peaches, all of those require insect-mediated pollination. So bees play a major role in the production of fruits and vegetables in our economy. The goal of Nomo May is really to provide that early-season forage for pollinators, not really to encourage lazy neighbors, but rather to actually bring to the front an education campaign that says, what are the best practices in actually creating habitat and protecting habitat for this little piece of our biodiversity that often goes ignored? Just to share a few of the results, if you turn to the middle part of the pamphlet here, there's a very tiny graph, and I'm happy to provide this as a PDF later, so you can zoom in on the axes and whatnot. But what you see here are the results specific to the city of Oshkosh from the year of 2021. Nomo May is actually a great opportunity to engage citizen scientists. And by citizen scientists, I mean folks that aren't traditionally trained as an ecologist, as I am, but maybe somebody that's just interested in collecting a little bit of data for us in their backyard. We engaged 17 different citizen scientists around the city of Oshkosh, and they monitored biodiversity in their backyards as they participated in Nomo May and compared it to a neighbor's yard that was not participating in Nomo May and was mowing regularly. So that is the mow treatment versus the un-mow treatment in the participants' yards. And what we found generally was that both flower abundances, so early blooming flowers tended to be higher in areas that weren't mowed. That seems to make sense, right? If you don't mow it, things are gonna come to bloom. But is, the big question is, is that actually impacting bee abundance and bee biodiversity? And the answer to that is yes. If you flip to the last bit of the pamphlet here, you'll see that both abundances, and again, this is data for just for Oshkosh, so just for those 34 plots here in the city of Oshkosh, we see that pollinator abundances can be as much as seven times higher in Nomo yards than in regularly mowed yards. We also see that pollinator diversity is about three times higher in non-mowed areas relative to mowed areas. So is Nomo causing a change? Yes, but the story's a little bit more complicated than that. But Nomo yards are at least providing a foraging resource for our early emergent pollinators. So think about it in this way. This is how I like to explain to folks, is you're coming out, put yourself in the six shoes of a bee. And, you know, you're coming out of hibernation, you've been deprived of nutrients all winter long. The first thing you want to do is reach up and get something to eat. Could be anything. Could be a cheeseburger, could be a nice salad, could be a variety of things. Some of those things that come to bloom early on are essentially cheeseburgers for bees. They're not very good for you, they're not the worst thing, but they, if you eat them in large quantities, they can make a substantial impact on how well your colony does for that year. So think, think of things like clover and dandelions. These are the big ones that bees are actually going after. So a lot of folks will freak out a little bit about having yellow lawns for the month of May. But the reality is that even though it's not a high-quality resource, it's still an important resource, because it's just so darn abundant. Okay, and so bees will go after that forage, will go after the pollen and the nectar that is produced to substantially get their colonies up and running. So one of the really great things that we've seen as part of this, out of this program in Oshkosh is that back in 2020, we had five households register to participate in the city of Oshkosh, and technically, I guess they were rogue households, because it wasn't approved by the city at that point. But 2021, it did become approved by the city, and 76 folks registered. And last year, in 2022, we had over 600 people register in the city of Appleton, sorry, of Oshkosh. So what this means is that even if we, I mean, we are protecting a large span of area for pollinator resources. This roughly, kind of back of the envelope calculation, translates to at least 100 acres of pollinator-friendly area in the city of Oshkosh. But we're also educating people, right? We're also reaching people and letting them know, like, what are some other really great things that you can do for your community to sustain your pollinators? Planting, replacing lawns, for example, with native flora, so that we can have more healthier resources for our bees as the year goes on. So overall, I consider Nomo May to be a success on many fronts. We've expanded out to 47 different municipalities across the US. Last year was a big boom year for us. You know, and Oshkosh is really the second place to be doing it. So it's kind of exciting to be in on the early groundwork for this project. So with that in mind, I'm happy to address any questions you all might have, any concerns, or if you'd rather reach out to me by email, I'm happy to do that, too.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First of all, thank you for coming, because I think several of us asked last year that, hey, are we being successful? So now, keep in mind, I'm an anti-Nomo May person, but I felt guilty, so I became a beekeeper. So, so there's a compromise there. But one of my largest complaint items throughout the year is Nomo May. People don't like the way the yards look and everything. Is there a compromise in there, and how negatively would it affect? And I'm not expecting you to answer this, but unless you know, obviously, but if we just kept this to backyards? So can you, can you address that a little bit? And obviously, it's gonna cut down on the success rate, but typically, backyards are larger than front yards, and it, maybe there's a compromise in there someplace.
Absolutely. You can reduce the amount of area that you are actively participating in Nomo May. And not mowing is just one of many things that we actually recommend folks do. Other things include, like, reduce fertilizer, herbicide, and pesticide use. Also planting native flowers, beekeeping, I also keep bees. And, you know, all of those things are great things that you can do for your biodiversity. Having said that, though, it's, maybe it's, the question really becomes is, what do we really identify as beautiful? And should I impose my version of beautiful, of a beautiful landscape, on my neighbors? Right? Beautiful, I've seen very, very well-manicured, beautiful grass, nothing but grass lawns. And I've also seen really beautiful, well-manicured, well-kept wild lawns with native flowers and lots of bloom, lots of colors, lots of insect activity. So if somebody chooses to go that right, that way, I think we should encourage that as individuals, rather than punish them by saying, like, oh, no, you can't participate in this particular, in this particular program. And again, this is only one month. The biggest activity that happens is, you know, the biggest bang for your buck is actually doing it for about three, three and a half weeks. So you don't even have to go the whole month without mowing. We just, you know, ask people to be respectful and good neighbors. And if you choose to participate, great. And if you choose to continue mowing, by all means, continue to do so.
Thank you again for coming. We really appreciate it. You're very informative. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you Beekeeper Bill for that. And we'll go to Councilmember Wojciechowski next.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and information. You know, this is something that the Sustainability Advisory Board has been very passionate about. And I know we've done a number of other things, like updating our native plants' ordinance. But you do make a great point, and where you included in here, it's time to rethink weeds and traditional landscape beauty. And it really is, it's, you know, an aesthetic thing, it's a culturally normal thing, I guess, that we just keep our grass cut and have no weeds. But, you know, you do make a good point, and I agree. And I think this helps start that conversation about, you know, diversifying our yards and the type of plants we have in them. You know, I'm obviously very supportive of Nomo May, so I'd like to hope that we would continue doing it. But I thank you for providing this information. I think this helps a lot of other people as well.
Yeah, you're very welcome. And just to give you a little perspective from our, from your neighbors up the street in Appleton, our city council is very passionate about environmental protection and conservation. We've expanded and modified our ordinances to include and allow the cultivation of native wildflowers in city terraces. We're also now currently reviewing our ordinances on chemical pesticide, herbicide, and fertilizer use, all with the hopes of just maintaining a healthier, cleaner, and more sustainable environment.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I echo both of my fellow councilmember's statements. I really appreciate you coming tonight, because I know I was one of the ones that, I wanted more information. And I don't like it when we get just asked blindly to approve things. I don't think it's right. So a huge appreciation for showing up. Information's very relevant, that's awesome. I appreciate that it's actually referencing Oshkosh. And that you're also encouraging other forms. As Councilmember Miller, other forms of help to the biodiversity. As Councilmember Miller stated, you know, this is probably the largest influx of calls and emails and disgruntled residents and business owners talking to us about this. So while I'm not a huge fan?
Right.
I also get it. I understand that there's something to it. You know, it's trying to balance that out. Neighbors have a right to want to live in a nicely-kept neighborhood. They don't have, say, over their neighbors' yards. However, we all, we all want to, you know, we all want certain living arrangements. I get that, and so is this balancing act.
Of course. No, I completely get it. As alderman in the city of Appleton, I have the exact same emails, right? For a month out of the year, I'm the most hated person in Appleton. And that's okay, I'll take the heat. It's totally fine. You know, during that month, I expressed to people that, yes, not mowing your lawn is the easiest thing to do. Not doing something is really, really easy. When it really gets down to it, we expect that you take the opportunity of Nomo May and maybe that extra time that you now have in your hands by not having to push around a mower and use it to plant some natives, or rethink of what pesticides or herbicides you might be using, or maybe take up beekeeping and really help our pollinators in other ways. So I get that it's a delicate balance. Every city is a little bit different. I've now done dozens of these visits, mostly virtual, but luckily, I'm just up the street here. But yeah, I mean, all municipalities have these similar concerns. You know, oh, our yard is gonna be really trashy, or we're gonna bring in rodents and mice and ticks. We've actually collected data on rodents, mice, ticks, and we found no correlation between Nomo yards and regularly mowed yards. There's just no evidence to suggest. What's really cool about the data that I have here is actually, it's Oshkosh-specific. So Oshkosh was one of four municipalities that participated in the citizen science program with me in 2021. They included Appleton, Oshkosh, Wausau, and Stevens Point. And all the trends were roughly the same. Across multiple municipalities, we are seeing generally positive effects on our pollinators by just reducing the frequency of our mowing for that one short month.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you again.
Professor Del Toro, I have a question.
Yes, of course.
So apologies for my delay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for filling in. So my question is, so we use one of those old reel mowers, you know, no gas, all this. So my husband's not exactly excited about the idea of a month's worth. Is there still benefit to, let's say you only do two weeks?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so actually, there's no real benefit to just skipping one week, but skipping two weeks or three weeks seems to be kind of that sweet spot. Skipping four weeks actually causes a little bit of reduction. We saw that maybe the grass becomes a little bit taller, and bees aren't easily accessing those resources. So the ideal sweet spot is really two to three weeks. And if you just, you know, mowed once during the month of May, that would be a really nice sort of setup. And for some people, it might not be practical, right? I'm thinking of, like, elderly folks that might not be able to combat a jungle that rises up in their yards. It might not be practical, but there are a plethora of other things that you can do to help our pollinators out.
Thank you again.
Of course. Thank you, folks. Really appreciate your time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, we are now at citizens' statements to council. And citizens have five minutes here, limited to five minutes, and address items that are not listed on the agenda, limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and that we may address at a future meeting. No endorsements of candidates or other electioneering. Do we have anyone registered?
Kristen Miller. Is Kristen still here? Nope, that's it.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Do we have anyone registered on consent?
We do. Dan Brosman.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Council. My name's Dan Brosman. I'm the owner-operator of the Oshkosh Pedal Trolley. And I thought with the inaugural season done, it would be appropriate to give you an update on how everything went, and then address any questions. Overall, I think a great success. We started the season a little late, started in the first week of August, did 80 tours, wrapping up that second week of October. We had a, there's a significant economic impact to the pedal trolley operating in the city. There are multiple stops along the tour routes at local establishments downtown. And there is time spent by the tourgoers downtown before and after tours. I don't have an exact dollar figure, but I just want to express the economic impact that the trolley has had on our downtown businesses. In addition, I am a proponent of giving back to the community. So I've donated 10 different tours to local organizations in support of their charity efforts and their mission, provide a further impact. And overall, the community has been extremely welcoming and supportive. I'm grateful to be a part of this community and operating a business within. Just want to keep it brief, and I'll answer any questions if that's appropriate as well. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. May I have some questions for you? Do we have anyone else registered for consent?
We do not.
You don't? Okay. Back to council for discussion.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And if I may, I'll just say, I'm excited to report that some of the concerns of neighbors in some of the adjacent neighborhoods, we had no complaints as far as noise or litter. So thank you very much for that. I do have a follow-up question, and that is, if an organization wanted to rent the pedal trolley for a mocktail-like alcohol-free event, are you open to that?
Oh, absolutely. 100%. So you don't have to just drink on the trolley. We'll have fun, and there's other themed tours kind of in the works. So absolutely, I would very much so welcome that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion, please call the roll on consent.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
And if we can just kind of bump a little bit out of order, it appears we did have somebody else that went to speak at Citizen Statements that may still be here, if council would oblige.
Sure.
He was here at the time.
Okay. So just to clarify, we are background citizen's name is for a moment.
I'm sorry. Terry Schrader, 1010 Bowman. Found out this week through the Bowman Project over there in Angle Parking, the street rebuild, that, talking to Justin and Josh, that they filled in on...
Wait a minute. If you, I apologize for cutting. I hate doing that. If this is regarding Angle Parking and...
Nope.
Nope?
It's not, it's with that project, but it's not concerning that at all. There's something new that I just learned.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
It's on.
We can see it.
It's on.
See it?
Yeah.
Okay. Unbeknownst to me, I found out this is the right-of-way between my house and the Marina. This is a 60-foot right-of-way, roughly. And there's an 18-inch storm drain that runs down there, which the city is going to take out, remove, as it is on Tyler, I believe. And they're running it down to Coolidge, all three of them. What I found out is that that 18-inch runs just about underneath that tree. So that tree is called to get taken down. Nice, healthy maple tree. And it's like, well, I talked to Justin. He said he was going to work on it, see what he could do. I don't know who makes the call. I was talking to Mr. Robbie a little bit on it. You know, can we cut the pipe each side? Just throw some slurry concrete in that section under the tree? Why lose a good tree? We're Tree City, and trying to promote that. And then they said, when they go down the shoreline, the sewer comes out right about here. They're going to take that, all those trees down, too, and clean that all up. And going back to No-Mo-May, I mean, we got wildflowers going down there, this and that. The biggest thing that we have, that I'm pretty happy about, is we got that. We got eagles that congregate in that tree. Don't know why. They don't go across the river to Spelman's and all that habitat. They got all the woods over there between the ax and Spelman's. They're not there. They're in those trees right by the river, and they sit there, and I got them on film going down grabbing fish. And just concerned about it. I mean, I hate to see the trees all go. I don't know, you know, who are taking this pipe out? We just clean that shoreline up. It's just a done deal. If there's not a good reason, which, that's all I want to know, is who's in charge, who says that? Can we save it? I mean, there you go, there's five eagles in the tree right there. And they're neat. They're, you know, so it's, I don't know what to do. I was kind of struggling this week. I'm hoping we can save all of it, just making you aware of it, and see where we can go with it. That's it.
City manager?
Happy to talk to staff about it. First I heard of it.
Okay. Sounds like a really good fishing spot near you.
Pardon me?
Sounds like a really good fishing spot near you.
Yeah, out on my dock.
Yeah, I'll be there tomorrow.
That's my life. But the eagle, they just congregate there. You watch, and they come in. I don't know where they're coming in. If they come from Kakona Down, out of the rapids up there, but they hang in that tree, and they just up and down the river, but they always there. We're lucky. I'm hoping one of them will nest one day. So I don't know if you have any other questions?
But staff will look into that. Forest Park will...
Look into it. Get back to you.
Perfect.
If you've already been in touch with Justin, we'll work with you. Thanks, Terry.
Thanks, Wimpy.
All right. Thank you. All right. So back to the order here. We'll move to pending ordinances, the first of which, 23123, is amend loading zone and parking regulations around Jefferson Elementary School on 11th Avenue and Minnesota Street. Is there anyone registered? Okay. Back to council.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
And ordinance 23124 prohibit right turn on red from westbound Sixth Avenue onto Ohio Streets. Is there anyone registered for this item?
No.
Back to council.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this prohibiting right turn on red at Sixth and Ohio? All right. Please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
And ordinance 23125 add angled parking east side of Bowman Street between Tyler Avenue and Van Buren Avenue in the vicinity of the Marina located at 1,000 Bowman Street. Are there folks registered for this item?
No.
Council, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the angled parking? All right. Please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
And ordinance 23126 approve zone change from single-family residential nine district to institutional district for properties located at 904 Grove Street and 847 Oak Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered for this? All right. Back to council.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lyons? I think we got a couple of emails asking whether or not this would have, like, any kind of traffic impact. There was some maybe rumor about a portion of a closure at that elbow. Is that accurate? I don't believe it is.
No. At this time, this, the zone change of these two properties is just to incorporate those two former single-family residential properties into the development site for the new school.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other discussion, please call the roll on 23126.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
And we will move to new resolutions, 23127, adopt diversity, equity, and inclusion committee strategic plan. I see there are some folks here. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
No one signed up to speak.
All right. Back to council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. This has been a long process to get here, so I'm thankful for council for being patient while the DEI committee has taken time to work on this. There is a lot of stuff that we ended up taking out as a result of just, you know, how we, just to make sure, like, we got it to council. So I just, you know, I'm thankful. I see colleagues from the committee here representing. Thank you for being here. Thank you for working on this. This is the first step. This is not the end-all, be-all. This is the beginning of addressing DEI in Oshkosh. So I'm very hopeful that we can pass this today and get this work started. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wojciechowski. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting this tonight. I know it was a rough path to get here. I was just hoping maybe there'd be a little bit more meat to it. But I will be supporting this. Thank you all for battling through this and getting this to us. It is greatly appreciated, and I know there was a lot of love, sweat, and tears put into this, so thank you.
And yes, I'm very grateful to the many, many hours that brought us to this point. And I, too, was kind of expecting to see something that was a little more fleshed out. But I do realize it is a very iterative process. It has been. And thank you so much for all of the work that you've done. I will be supporting it, but I do hope that we'll see a little more detailed, you know, recommendations and implementation action. Thank you, Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, it was very much more detailed than this and much more in-depth, but just, you know, having conversations with council members and, you know, confusion on the language of the ordinance and, you know, what the responsibilities and duties were. There was a lot of back and forth. I think this is why we came to this final document, which is, like I said, just the beginning, so we can, you know, get things started. We wanted it to be broad, so that way we had a little bit of flexibility in what our focuses were and how we want to move forward. But definitely, there are a lot more things coming. But I believe, yeah, this is a great start to get this, you know, this action rolling.
Thank you again. All right. Please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. Resolution 23128, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for multifamily development at the northeast corner of West Fourth Avenue and Michigan Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered, or who would like to speak on this item?
We do. Paulette Feld.
Welcome.
My name is Paulette Feld. I live at 416 West Fifth Avenue, and I'm also co-chair of our Neighborhood Association. We weren't able to come to the Planning Commission meeting last week because we had a neighborhood leadership meeting the same night. And probably, if we would have known it was still going on later on, after our meeting was done, we probably would have come over here, since we were at the end of that meeting. So, but I just wanted to come tonight to just share a few thoughts for the neighborhood, and also those of us who are close to this property, just because I think it's important for us to be heard, although we did have neighborhood meetings. We had one in 2021 with Tim Hess from the developer. So we've had a chance to discuss this with them. And we're not against the development. We recognize the need for housing in our community, so, you know, we definitely aren't here to say, no, don't build it there. We want the green space. But I do know that the folks who live on Fourth Avenue are, you know, concerned about losing the green space that they've had for around 10 years. I don't remember when that was all cleaned up and torn down. One of the things that we're also concerned about in that area is how traffic's going to increase as a result of these 56 units, because right now, there's a lot of foot traffic on Michigan Avenue. If you sit, you know, we had a night out a couple of years ago on Michigan Avenue, Michigan and Fourth. And if you sit out there, there are people walking by, walking their dogs, going down to the Riverwalk, you know, from early in the morning until late in the evening. And I'm just concerned, and I'm sure of the people who live in that area are concerned, that this extra traffic is going to have an impact. So I'm wondering if the city has any plans to look at that and, you know, make any changes to what we have now in terms of how the traffic flows in that area. So that is one of our concerns. When we met with Tim Hess in 2021, we also discussed the drainage in that area. Right now, if you go over and look at the end of Fourth Avenue, we've got our pond in Right now, if you go over and look at the end of Fourth Avenue, we've got our pond in the vacant lot starting to form already and, you know, we're just starting the spring season, so we're really concerned that the parking lots in that area are going to cause that to be a bigger problem for those of us who have a garage sitting adjacent to that property because we do get flooding in our garage as a result of that. And I'm going to admit, our garage is very old. It's older than our house, so, you know, you can blame it on our garage, but there's still a big pond back there. And I know in the city reports that there is going to be, the city is going to look at the drainage in that area and some changes are going to be made to Fourth Avenue. So those are all, those are concerns we have that we know the city can look at. At that same meeting, those of us who were there from the Fourth, from Fourth Avenue and a few of us who are adjacent to the property on Fifth, told Tim Hess that if we're not comfortable with the way the project looked, that we will tell them that we don't like it. We're not going to be shy about it and we don't like the way the project looks.
You're not going to hurt Tim's feelings. You're going to hurt Chet's.
Well, I know. I know. I watched the plan commission meeting. This is the second time that we've had developers come into our area. Several years ago, the people who were going to redevelop the Morgan property came back after all the old Morgan buildings were torn down and they presented a plan with a lot of buildings that looked like industrial buildings, even though they were apartment buildings. And it's like, why did we, one of our neighbors told, said, why did they tear down those buildings if they're just going to build buildings that look like what was there? And, you know, I agree with him. Why do we do that? Why can't we make it look different than what it did for 100 years? Look, I know that the developers looked at other buildings in that area that are similar to what they're proposing in terms of the standing metal siding and they had to look down to dockside and the boatworks, which are both buildings that aren't even visible from the site. And they also brought up a couple other smaller things that are materials similar to the siding they want to use. And I do know that the plan commission reduced the amount from down to 30% of the standing metal. And that's a good thing, but I just don't know if that's really appropriate in an area that has, I never heard anybody talk about the houses that are in that area. The houses that have been there for like 125 years or more. All we heard about is, you know, the buildings that look like what they want their building to look like. And they want it to look kind of like what the boatworks look like. Well, the boatworks wasn't the most beautiful building in the world and neither is the city building that's across the street. So that's one of the concerns that we have. There are other buildings on the riverfront in that area that are visible from that site. Buildings like the foundation and the probation and parole office and other professional buildings down there are all made of brick. And I don't understand why that's not an option for these apartment buildings. There's also been comments that the design was inspired by the boatworks and the outdoors. Well, as a hiker and somebody who's spent time camping and all that kind of thing, I don't think of that kind of building when I think of buildings outdoors. I think of buildings in state and national parks that have stone piers and are made out of timbers and all that kind of thing. And I realize that timber buildings aren't probably an option in this case, but I think there is something that can be done that will make those buildings blend in more with the rest of the neighborhood. Besides the loss of green space for the people on Fourth Avenue, there's also the issue of the dark color that's been chosen for those buildings. A dark color really sucks the light out of that area. When I sit in my living room, I can look across the river and right now I have a perfect view of Max and Corners. And it's amazing to see what a dark building like that, how the light gets sucked out of an area when you're looking at it. And it totally changed the skyline of Oshkosh that we can see out of our windows. And I'm thinking of the people in boats on the river when they come through and see that. Is that really, you know, the kind of thing we want to keep adding to the riverfront? So just for fun, I brought something along. Some of you may know I'm also on the landmarks committee and Sarah and I have also been doing a lot of work researching the history of our house on Fifth Avenue. And so something that you use a lot when you're doing that research are Sanborn maps, which were all fire maps that were used. So.
Can you, can someone help her with the display here?
Jake, if you can turn the projector on. Yep, he's coming with us.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
And Paulette, if I could ask you, we're starting to run on time here.
Okay, I'm almost done.
Okay.
I just want to point out this area here. That is in the area where this project is going to be. You can see what?
It's actually the project area. It's actually, actually.
Okay.
Just right over here.
Okay, and so the lines you see in that area are railroad tracks and those are all gone. But the dashed areas that you see there are 20-foot-high piles of lumber. And so that is where in 1903, the Foster and Lothman Mill stored their lumber. And so as we move along with this project with these dark buildings, I can just foresee that those buildings are going to create the same kind of, with their dark color, are going to create the same kind of visuals that people back in 1903 in those houses on Fourth Avenue had looking out their front windows. So I think as we, as that project is worked on, I think maybe some lighter colors and other items can be used rather than the dark charcoal gray. So that's what I have as far as neighborhood concerns and I want to thank you all for listening to my thoughts, our thoughts.
Thank you. Is there anyone registered?
There is. Chat Westonberg.
Over here, guys.
Yep, this side. Oh, he's got something there.
Oh.
We have to use the laptop.
Do you know how?
No, that's why I brought Tim. Chat Wezenberg, 240 Algoa Boulevard. So, yeah, we have a short presentation for you here to show you our thoughts and what we're going to, what our ask is from you tonight. But first, I will say in the spirit of compromise, if you are willing to lighten the color up slightly.
Way to go. Way to rough them up, girls.
Yeah, I guess starting out right here with our, with the resolution and the issue that we have concern with and it's item three of the resolution, which is asking for a base standard modification to allow standing seam metal, a class four material, to be used. We don't believe that this material is a class four material and I think we brought some strong evidence as to why it's not. Next slide, please. Here is a part right from the zoning code, which identifies what materials are class one, two, three, and four. And I was telling people, I do, I read a lot of codes, zoning codes, building codes, and I think there's always an intent to a code. And I think the intent here is clear to identify class one materials as higher quality materials. Class two is a lower quality, three lower, and four lower than that. And I'd point out right now that class three materials are identified as architectural metal panels, which I believe this defines standing seam metal siding with a concealed fastener that we're proposing. I'd also point out that class three materials, which would be allowed on this building, would include vinyl siding. So I think that that's, to me, that's stunning that we would not be allowed to use this high-quality material that we specifically selected because it was a higher-quality material, but we would be allowed to have vinyl siding. Here I have some snippets from the brochure of the material that we are proposing, which is again a standing seam metal siding painted. And we highlighted a section here, right, the first, the first element right there identifies it as an architectural metal panel. It's from the manufacturer's information. Next, we had a discussion Tuesday before the plan commission meeting with Sam Blank, the owner of Muzo Metal Products. And I'm not sure how familiar you guys are, but Muzo Metal Products is one of the largest manufacturers and installers of metal siding in the state. They put siding, metal siding all over the state. So I highlighted an area for you there. Boy, I can't read that exactly, but I'd like to just take the time to read it. You know, I presented this at plan commission and I get back from hearing from people, all Chat did was say is it's not a class four material, but he didn't provide any evidence. And it's like, I kind of think I did. I just think everybody didn't read. But Sam says, "These panels are commonly called architectural panels because of the concealed fastener installation method and the nature of architectural use." I would think of Sam as really one of the, one of the experts in the industry. Oh, I also presented this at plan commission because Tuesday morning I woke up and I was having my cup of coffee and this, I mean, this really happened to me. That I sat down and I'm reading Architect Magazine. So as a member of the AIA, the American Institute of Architects, included in your membership dues is a subscription to Architect Magazine. And I'm paging through it, you know, I always, you know, see what the industry's doing and what's new and what's hot. Well, the Residential Architect Design Award-winning project was covered in 100% class, what the city of Oshkosh would not allow. And that, and this is, so I'm saying this is not just me that likes this product. This is my architectural team that's gone through to design it. This is also architects from around the world from a renowned magazine that are voting this as a winning project. Somebody said to me, well, that's a container house. Well, it's not a container house. That's a custom home. But, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. It really is and these are renowned, respected architects. I brought this slide up. This is, you know, unfortunately, as we submit to the city of Oshkosh, we submit for our GDP SIP, one of the requirements is, is that we submit elevations. We submit them on a small scale. It's very difficult to read them. So I will concede that, you know, this does look awfully dark. This does look like it's 100% metal and it's not. What we're proposing, so this one building, I'm not sure which one this is. I believe the size of it looks to me like it's the building on the, on the east, the east building. Yeah, so on one elevation, we're proposing a total of 30.41% standing seam and then on the other, we're 59.48. I know there's another building that's in the, that's 60 or 61%, but just wanted to show this. So this is what we submitted. So I kind of understand people saying, hey, that does look like an awful lot of metal, but it was described and, and here is a rendering that we submitted. Again, it's a little difficult to chew, to determine, but that's, that was by design intent, you know? We really wanted it to be simple, subtle, and sophisticated and we wanted to have these different materials and these different textures. So when the light hits them, you will be able to see a difference in them, but it's just not, it's not easy to show in a rendering. But we did do something here, this next slide. So now you see the light gray there is the architectural metal, the class three architectural metal. The blacked-out areas are other materials, which would include glass and also different faux woods. So we're proposing a hardy board product. So it's not an all-metal building. Also wanted to show this slide just to show, what I just described before is that we are going to be using different materials and different textures and predominantly, we're looking at standing seam metal profile, which is like the picture on the top. And then, but we're also proposing a reverse board and batten and a lapboard siding. But the reverse board and batten, it's to show like this additive, this inverse of what, of what the predominant project, material is. So it's intentional that it look alike, but it's subtly different. So you can see that here, it's again, a little bit difficult to see, but the home on the upper left is not metal. It's not vinyl. It's a full wood product, the hardy product, reverse board and batten. And then I finish up with our ask and our ask is to amend condition three of the resolution to approve the plans in the present form. With that, open up if anybody has any questions.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Chat, Tim, I travel a little bit out west and I see this product a ton out in Montana, Wyoming. And it's working its way here architecturally. I mean, am I accurate where maybe this started out west and in the, in those areas and it kind of took off? Even in California, it's a big product out there, although I don't like to reference California for anything. But, but I do see a lot of it in Wyoming, Colorado, Montana. I agree with you, but I also agree with the ladies. It's very dark, you know? But I don't think that, I don't think that that's a substandard product whatsoever, so.
That's our main argument.
And I do appreciate your compromise for the ladies on lightening the building up a little bit, so maybe you can drop them off a gift.
Yeah, and really, you know, after, I mean, after plan commission, I went back to our office and I asked the guys in the office, I'm like, hey, let's just look in the mirror, you know, is this really, is this not a, you know, we love it. Is it not a beautiful building? Is it us? Are we doing something wrong? And, you know, I've got, and I've got, you know, I've got a staff, you know, that's diverse as well, you know? So I've got one guy that's a real pragmatist and I've got one guy that's a real stickler and the stickler's like, man, we studied this. We did every, we looked at this in so much detail. You know, I don't want to compromise. I don't want to design by formula. I don't want, you know, he's like, that's not how you do it. Like, and then I've got the other guy that says, hey, Chat, I found this vinyl siding. It's really close to it. He's like, you're going to be able to save tens of thousands of dollars. Why don't you just switch it to vinyl siding? Get it approved. Let's go. Let's go on to the next project. You know, so what does that tell you, you know?
Um, well, I just want to, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wojciechowski. You go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, we talk a lot about how we want to make it, you know, easier and more attractive to developers to come here and do these projects. And I can't help but feel that, you know, we miss out on a lot of great and, you know, uniquely aesthetic buildings and projects when we limit these type of materials. I mean, it is, it is aesthetic and, you know, I think there is, there is compromise to making sure it fits the neighborhood. But I also think, you know, we can attract more people to the city when we, you know, move away from the standard brick buildings that seem to be in our city everywhere. You know, I think adding diversity of buildings is important and I'd like to, I'm not going to make the amendment right now because there's other words, but I would be.
We, you haven't even approved the.
When that time comes.
I'd just like to say thank you to Paulette and Sarah for coming because that was from the outset, you know, something that was really important was that the developer also, you know, worked with the neighbors and I just wanted to ask kind of a clarifying question, like, how many shades of gray lighter would you say this is? Because it's kind of really tricky here. Again, rendering, screen.
So I started out, I started out to answer the question and I kind of got, I got my mind kind of carried away. But one of the reasons why, like our team, we discussed on lightening it up, is I said, hey, we're not, right now this dark color, we're not seeing the different diversity of materials. And I think a lighter color would help that. So, you know, I don't know, Lori, because I want to study that more, but I don't want to go white, you know? But I'm thinking like a lighter gray, that will allow the shadow to show up, be a little more pronounced. And I think that that's where I think, Paulette said that the dark color, the dark eats the light, you know, and that it does. It doesn't exaggerate and contrast the shadow as much, so that's where, that's where we're coming from.
And I also appreciate the detail on, you know, clarifying that this is actually a higher-quality material than, than maybe the spirit of our, you know, quoted previously, maybe there was a, you know, more of a reference back to like, you know, tin roofs or something. But the percentages, I guess, seem to be significantly more than what's there. And I guess that's where it's kind of hard to find this like happy medium. But I appreciate the concessions and the input. Sounds like we have another council member, like weigh-in, Councilmember Hansen.
If we're picking it apart, can I ask another question? So there are colored blocks around some of the windows. Are those actually colored blocks that are going to be in the, okay. And then the kayaks as well are going to, is they're all part of it?
Yes.
Awesome.
So, yeah, I didn't get into it too much, but there were two main driving concepts. Those architects, we, when we're designing, we develop a concept that helps us make design decisions. And there were two of them. And one was that we wanted to honor the waterfront and the boating kind of history of Oshkosh and the different marinas. So we wanted to do that and the buildings that are there, but we wanted to do it with a more high-quality refined product. And that's why we chose this product, because it has a similar character, but it's a more high-quality and refined, more elegant product. And then I would say also. And then I would say also, um, the other thing was, is we, we did look around at different precedents and buildings that we liked. And we found uh Ellen Albion and REI. And specifically, like, the Ellen Albion um stores have kayaks out, and I'm thinking, that's just great, I love that contrast of color, I love that. And then that, that also identifies with the type of customer, our ideal tenant. So when you're branding a building, when you're branding a apartment project, when you're branding the concept, you kind of, one of the things you do is you say, who's our, who's our target customer? And our target tenant is somebody that's going to have an outdoor lifestyle, is going to utilize the kayak, kayak launch. And we didn't talk about that at all, but right, right in front of this building is one of the best park facilities that we have, and this kayak launch that's really easy to use. So we wanted some, uh, ideal customer that's going to use the kayak launch, use the uh, the walking paths and the, and the River Walk for running and biking.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thanks.
And I guess I just wanted to bring something up about the, there was a question about drainage. And it looks like to me in here that under the staff memo, the stormwater management, that um Public Works noted that there would be a cul-de-sac needed at the, let's see here, Far East End. Would that resolve some of the, or not resolve, but would that address some of these potential drainage? Obviously, we're going to have a stormwater management plan that Public Works reviews, but would that address some of that?
Yeah, we hope that would help address it, and then of course, there would be no more runoff from the site because they would have to account for it as part of their stormwater management plan.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
There is one more person.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Tim Hess?
Oh, okay, all right, so no more, okay, so we have a motion and a second, um, a, sorry, further discussion. All right, please call the roll.
Question, hang on.
Oh, wait.
Sorry, is this for this amendment that they're asking for us, would that be on this one or the next one?
Both.
Both, okay.
So you're going to make the motion on this one?
I'm sorry, who was this?
Yeah, I was the second.
Okay.
Yeah, then I'll make an, a motion to amend condition three of the resolution to approve the plans in present form. I don't know if that's the correct language, Mark.
Second. Any discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with it. When it comes to aesthetics, I wear the same blue shirt every day, so I'm not the best guy to talk to. But I think we're, I think we're beyond the scope there, I have a whole closet full of them. It's true. I will for the rest of my life.
Your blue shirt's my black turtleneck.
It's the way to live, right? It's incredibly calming for me, but anyways, no. So again, I don't claim to be an expert on aesthetics, but certainly materials, I think this is a case where we have limits on these class four materials for a very good reason. We don't want our developers using cheap or non-durable um areas. But I do think that we're in a situation here where our, our current interpretation just isn't up to date with the nuance of standing seam metal. You know, I think staff is right to recommend what they did, I think Plan Commission was right to approve it, that, that body follows the standards that's supposed to follow, and that's important. Um, but this body has the opportunity to exercise a little more leeway. And that's not news to anyone about the, the struggle that planning has with classifying materials. It comes up all the time, staff brings it up, and we try to find a perfect way to do it, there's no perfect way to do it. But updating that takes time, and I want to hold the developer hostage to that time. And I know that we're always going to be concerned about precedent, so I want to make that clear here, that I think the only precedent we're setting here, if we pass this amendment, is that we as a governing body are willing to exercise judgment to meet the intents of our policies when situations like this arise where the reality of development, I guess, hasn't caught up, or I guess our codes haven't caught up to the reality of developer needs. So for those reasons, happy to support it.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I try not to disagree with Councilmember Ford when he's right, so I won't disagree with almost anything he said, because I'm, I'm just nearly as bland in my, in my white and blue shirts too. Um, and my, and, and I do not have an eye for architecture, I, I had a great, great conversation with Mr. Hess the other day and, and shared that, that as well. You know, first glance at this, um, it, it looks like what we had and what was in that space previously. But I get the intent, and that's where I come back to on this. Even within our own code, we have certain intents that we try to meet, and I think right now we just have it wrong in, in terms of the classification of this material. And the intent was to make sure that it was not, you know, that we didn't use low-class, low-quality materials, and this is not. So I think we just have it, we have it incorrect, and I, you know, of course, I'd like to see staff at some point review that and, and try to correct that for the future. But just for me, it just comes back to intent, so I'll support the motion to amend for this one, and with hopes that, you know, over time, we can work on, on, on just making sure the classifications are, are current and up to date. Things are moving fast in, in certain areas, and, and government's never the leader and never the fastest, sometimes we're a little slow, and sometimes we just need a little chance to catch up, and I think that might be just one of those times right now, so I'll, I'll, I'll support it.
Councilmember Hanson.
They like to talk a lot, they said a lot of good things, but thank you for challenging this. You were correctly right, this is an architectural panel, this is not just some more corrugated metal, it's going to look great. Thank you for, thank you for pushing it to us and everything else.
And I'd just like to say, I appreciate the fact that the materials are also pointed out to be sustainable in their recyclability and potentially, you know, energy efficiency with that metal roof and longevity, really appreciate that. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really want to thank you guys for compromising with the ladies, I, I, I think that's huge, you, you guys are going to be neighbors, and to me, that, that, that says everything. So I want to thank you for coming and presenting your side, and I want to thank you guys for, for challenging us a little bit, thank you.
City Attorney.
Just to clarify, you still need the base standard modification, so I think to do what you would like to do on the third condition, it would be a base standard modification to allow standing seam metal class four material to be used as accent to trim, deleting the portion that says not to exceed 30% of each facade. Will get you, correct?
Um, you'd have to remove accent and trim because it's, it's the primary material.
It's the primary material.
Do you want to like amend your amendment?
Hang on, just a second.
We're trying to get to your intent, to make sure it says.
So as I understand it, the amendment is for the purpose of um moving on with the exceedance of that 30%.
You need a base standard modification.
To allow the material.
Um, I guess if the group does agree that it's a class three material, it would be a non-issue, and you can remove the condition. If everybody agrees it's a class three material, then that is allowed.
And I would just say that I have a hard time with the difference between a decorative metal versus a non-decorative, if it's considered architectural, um, as far as a quality thing, whether or not there's a design imprinted in it or not, but, I'm sorry, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we also need to put in there hidden fasteners, I, I, so I, I think that's real important that we had, you know, you, you can't see the fasteners. Don't you guys agree? Yeah.
Isn't that what standing seam covered fasteners means?
So to, to look back at how some of these similar situations have been resolved in the past, Plan Commission and Council on various projects in the past, excuse me, have weighed in and said, we believe X material should be considered class blank. If this, what I'm hearing is if you consider standing seam metal with concealed fasteners class three, we could, as we did with, I'm thinking like Oshkosh Corp, some other project in the past where we used like Heritage Brick. You made a decision, you believe Heritage Brick is the equivalent of a class one, and then we just put that in a condition, instead of a base standard modification, just a condition that the PD, Council believes standing seam metal with concealed fasteners is an appropriate class three material. And that way, they don't need a base standard, you've now made the decision that you believe it is a material appropriate for that level, and they can use it within their development.
So they would replace the current condition three with.
Essentially saying, finding that standing seam metal with concealed fasteners is an appropriate class three material.
So is that the amendment then?
That's your motion.
Okay, that's my motion. That's what you said.
It can get a little awkward up here sometimes.
A men to approve project with materials as submitted, proposed standing seam metal with hidden fasteners to be considered class three material. Okay, and that's what you said?
Yeah.
All right, I, yeah, I second.
You seconded, I.
Any discussion further? All right, please call the roll.
Amendment first.
Amendment first.
So on the amendment, Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six. Then to approve the general development plan and specific implementation plan for it for multifamily at northeast corner of West Fourth and Michigan, Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, so now we'll go to the SIP, the 23129, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for multifamily development at northwest corner of West Fourth Avenue and Michigan Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
So do we just have to add as amended?
No, this, there, so the two resolutions were for two different buildings, so you're going to want to make the same amendment for the second building.
Thank you.
Is this the northwest corner?
Got it, all right, thank you.
I'm sorry, can the northwest corner, can somebody pull that up again?
Oh, which one is this?
It's in my packet. Northwest, okay, so this would be the old city building? Okay, got it, the storage building. Councilmember Wojciechowski.
So I'll propose the same amendment. I don't know what the exact language was.
Delete condition three and replace it with the same language from the last resolution.
So that's, yeah, deleting condition three, replacing with the same language regarding the standing seam metal.
As a class three material.
Class three material.
With concealed fasteners, all right.
That was my, my motion.
Second.
And just out, out of curiosity, is there standing seam that does not have covered? Okay. All right. Any other discussion questions? All right, please call the roll on 23129.
The amendment first.
I'm sorry, on the amendment. I feel like we should have an app for that, for you, Jesse, like.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right.
And then 129 as amended.
129 as amended now.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, we had to listen to you guys, you got to stay and listen to us.
All right, resolution 23130, approve general development plan for multifamily development.
The next two were laid over.
I'm sorry, those two were laid over, out of order, that's right, Deputy Mayor did share that with me. So we're at council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. Are there any council members that wish to put future agenda items on or future workshops for discussion? Doesn't appear to be council member announcements and statements, report of council liaison for boards and commissions. And I guess I would ask to, Councilmember Miller, is there any update yet, or are you guys still on track for the review?
I think we're on track, Lindsay's doing an amazing job, um, she's carrying all the weight. So yeah, I'm, I'm assuming sometime in, in April, I have not had a chance to talk to her previous to this meeting, but we are on track.
All right, um, we're at city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Got a couple memos in the agenda packet, uh, one is about the cooperative purchase of furniture for the Parks Department building. Even though the building is just now starting to show, we need to get these, the equipment ordered early and often. So this is a, uh, we put in the order under the state contract, and so we'll get a very good deal on that. Uh, we also have the professional services agreement with AECOM, this is, when you hear the term PESA rating, this is the year to do the PESA rating, and we're going to be using AECOM to do the work for us. Uh, and you'll see the result of that as we work on the capital improvement plan. For number 45, I have to start with an apology, because the item that I was going to include is still in my in-basket that Diane has prepared. I had intended to give it to you, so I'm going to give you just a real sketch, a brief sketch, because what you have in your packet is only the same thing you saw last week, which was the summary of how much we have left. We got about $2.3 million remaining of the non-infrastructure ARPA money, about $2.3 million as shown on that page. What I did was I took a look at the different applications we've received to date. I can tell you, based on, there were people watching this discussion at the last meeting, because I've gotten a couple inquiries, oh, you still have ARPA money that we can apply for? So uh with those statements put to the side, I took a look at where I projected. I'm not saying I'm recommending, because if I was recommending, I'd bring them to you and say I'm recommending, but I would project no more than 700,000 of other requests that I've seen, so that would take it down to about 1.6. And, and I think Deputy Mayor Mugrower, that's kind of, I thought that was the, the crux of your question. I will get that report to you, it's not Diane's fault, she gave it to me, and I just, I caught up with state-of-the-city stuff and didn't get it in your packet. So I will get that for you before I take off for vacation later on this week. Outstanding issues, is there any questions, Mr. Mugrower, you, because you had made that request?
No, I think that you know the intent, and it sounds like you're going to give us the information, and, and that's basically it, like, what's left to, to, to still disperse if we want to?
Yes, and, and suddenly I, I became a new friend to many more people than started.
You're welcome.
About that, I said, I'm, I'm the cousin who won the lottery, and everybody wants to get to know me now. So, uh, but I'll bring it to, I'll bring it to the aunt and uncle of family right here, so we'll be doing that shortly. The outstanding issues, happy to answer any questions you have, and then I did neglect to, uh, put something on that the mayor requested at the last meeting of just some updates on some stuff with absentee voting. Mayor, I guess I'll, I'll toss it to you, it's really more commercial message for absentee voting, we just sent out, what, 3,000?
3,051.
Yeah, we sent those out just yesterday, so, you know, they get them right away, and then they have to turn them around in 24 hours, so.
Yep, they got them mailed today.
They worked, they worked hard. So that's, we got 3,000 out.
Yeah, I think the, the follow-up question though was just, you know, ensuring that, that folks know that if there is any piece of that absentee ballot or the witness signature or address missing, those, as I understand it, are not being sent back directly to the voter because it's being kept at City Hall for a time issue, as far as mail and concern about the time in which it would be mailed back and then get back to City Hall. If, if you could just help the public understand what, what the rationale is, because apparently other cities do it differently, and each clerk can interpret that differently. If you could share.
Right, the, the statute doesn't require us to do anything with them, of course, we are going to try to help as many people have their vote count as absolutely possible. So when someone receives their absentee ballot, they get a very detailed letter that explains to them how to fill out their certificate, their certification envelope, that you put your ballot in and mail back to us or drop off at the city clerk's office. And that's what the mayor's talking about, on that envelope, it requires the voter to sign, it requires their witness to sign, and then it requires their witness to fill out their complete address, including the house number, the street name, and the city and zip, is what we are asking, has to have the city or the zip to be considered complete, along with those other things. If it comes back and any of those things are missing, that certificate is considered insufficient, and we cannot open that certificate on election day or count that vote, that ballot, it will remain sealed and will not count. So when that happens, we. So when that happens, we mark in WIS vote, um, the ballot as returned to be rejected. What that does is, if you were to go and track your ballot on My Vote, it would tell you that there's a, a concern and you need to contact the clerk's office. So they find out that way. We also send them this lovely letter that explains to them that something is wrong with their, um, certificate and tells them what their options are. They can come down and see us with their witness and, um, fill out the rest of the certificate, um, at the clerk's office. Or they can go to their polling location on Election Day with their witness and complete that. Or they can request that we mail it back to them. And that request, though, I need in writing. So they can just shoot me an email, that's fine, and then we'll mail it back.
So they can't just call you?
Nope. I want, I need to track that. So that's, that is my, my rule. But yes, I want, I want it tracked where that ballot is and why, that they have requested that we send it back. The reason that we have chosen not to automatically send it back is exactly as the mayor said. The time that we got the ballots was yesterday. Said shortly they have to be in the mail today. And I have to have them back by Election Day. That's three weeks from today. So I probably won't get these back in the mail for a few days, right, because they just went out. And then we'd have to turn around and mail it and then hope that they have a chance to get it back to us. So instead of putting it out in the mail, I don't want to do that unless the voter is aware that that's where it is. Because they may wish to come down to City Hall and take care of it, you know? Then they don't have to worry about it, the back and forth and all of that. So this way, they know that their ballot is with us unless they request that we send it back to them. I just think it offers them more opportunity to come in and actually take care of it. But if they do want it mailed to them, we're not saying we won't. Just please do that request in writing so I can track it and get it back to you.
And as I understand it, too, um, you're also calling if there is a phone number or emailing?
Yes.
If that's provided in the My Vote registration, correct?
If they've provided that with their voter registration, we do. We reach out with phone and/or email if we have it. And then we also follow up with the letter, realizing that this is not the fastest way because we still are depending on letter, but we know they will get it eventually. The quickest way is to just go back to My Vote and track your ballot and see where it is. Has it been returned? Or does it say that there's an issue? Or is it still in transit and we haven't gotten it yet? So.
How many, um, how many would you say that happened with in either our primary or our, um, our fall election? I mean, are we talking hundreds, thousands? How many are we talking about have been impacted?
Sure. In November, um, we actually, I wrote those numbers down, but I didn't bring them down with me. In November, um, I want to say it was around 300-ish, and more than 200 actually fixed it. So we had, which we, I thought was actually pretty successful. Unfortunately, in February, those numbers weren't as good with the, um, fixing rate, and I think it's because of the timing. For November, they receive, the first initial out of ballots that go out is six weeks before an election for, for the November. For the local elections, it's only three weeks. So they had a much shorter timeframe to find out that there was an issue and get in here and, and fix it or request that we send it back or whatever. So I'm assuming that that's why. Plus, normally our spring elections see more people requesting absentee because they are not here. You know, maybe they're a snowbird or they're traveling for spring break type of thing. So I think that may have also increased the number that we're not able to fix it due to just not being here.
And, and I guess that's my, my last question is, if folks, you know, use the absentee process, there's probably a really good reason. Either they're not physically here or maybe they have physical mobility issues. So how would you recommend for folks who can't physically come back in, like, ensure that they are going to get that, um, opportunity to correct that issue?
Well, the, the absolute best thing to do is follow the letter and fill it out. If you follow the letter, you won't have an issue. But, you know, that doesn't always happen. Give us a call. Give us a call. And if you, if that is your best option is to have it mailed back to you, you can, um, send us an email or mail us something and, and we'll, we'll get it out to you. But give us a call, and we can talk through when, when you could come in or if you can't, shooting us an email kind of thing. We want everyone who's take, gone through, you know, the effort to vote, we certainly want you to get your vote counted, so.
Every vote matters, so.
Absolutely.
That's the goal.
And early voting starts in person. You can show up to City Hall next Tuesday, a week from today. So that, that was the other part we wanted to make sure everybody was aware of. We're pushing it out through social media and everything. And Paula's one of our workers, and so Sarah, and they, they were just riveted by all this.
Thank you for your service. All right. Well, we'll, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.